I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting today, Thursday, July 3rd, 2025, at the Cumberland High School Transitional Building Cafeteria at 4:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Ms. Goldstein?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. I just want to note for the record, Ms. Shea already had a scheduled vacation and could not attend this evening. Public comment. Do I have comments from the public? Discussion, discussion and a vote to reconsider the 2025-2026 start and end times, including bus fleet and budget implication. After we received new information of needing four buses at $400,000 and the federal dollars being less than anticipated, we thought it would be a great idea to reconsider because the fiscal impact is much greater than expected or anticipated. Dr. Thornton?
Sure, so just to kind of build on that, as you know, last meeting you all went with Model B, and you know Durham memo came in the next day with the potential four bus add. And I had asked Durham after that, you know, did they think it'd be the big buses for 94K, the little for 132? Unclear at this point. So I'm doing the math in my head, just looking at it. If you went four bigs, it's 376. If you do four littles, it's 528. And somewhere in the middle, maybe it'll land, right? Four 14 for three bigs, one small. So take your pick. But it's a few dollars here that they were contemplating, knowing that you don't know the answer till you do the routing. That was just their initial thinking on that Friday, so I wanted to give it to you. So we did. And essentially, for the federal grants, the update, we did have a state meeting this week on the grants, and it looks like titles, Title I is set. It's all set when we're good to go. Titles II, III, and IV could get worse. Right now, we were reduced, as you had heard, it could be zero. We don't know. We're being told right now, we'll meet again next week with the state and look at CRP again, our grant, our procedure that we do, but very troubling. If it was zeroed out, it'd be 400 grand to the bad. Right now, it's 210 to the bad. That's our guess right now. IDEA looks to be okay, the special ed grant. So to put it all together, like I said last meeting, you're at 1.2 of fund balance. If you add in the grants and the bussing, it could be, you know, 1.7, 1.8, all said and done for fund balance. Let's kind of just have that in your mind. Some things just to mention again for the committee, as you know, we now have five special ed programs at five elementaries. We did have four. This would be a new one. Typically, those have mini buses. That's a new part of the equation. Last time we had these start times, we had two more large buses. That's 188-ish, right, for two large buses. We talked last time about reimbursement from St. Charles, maybe around 40K. Tim did check on that. It looks like that would come in July of '26. You wouldn't get it in this fiscal year. You'd get it. It'd just be after, okay? I know there was some discussion in some emails I received, as you got some emails, about things like, you know, fewer subs at start times of schools of 915. We did give you data on that, and that was not found to be accurate. And actually, when schools came to the trans, you saw their sub fill rate go down, with the exception of Ashton, surprisingly. You saw that table that I share with you all. But community, I know, had a lot of emails, but their sub rate is the highest in Cumberland. It went down to 58%, I believe, at the trans, but prior to that, they're in the 70s, 80% fill rate. So I just want to kind of talk about that, just to have that out there. What else? There was some discussion or some emails about maybe schools that are 915 schools have kids or have more dismissals than other schools. And once again, that was not, not accurate. Actually, we checked out the year 2017-18 to last year. One thing we did find is it's around 25% more, all the schools that are being, kids are being pulled out for things, whether you're early or late. The more shocking thing we found was just general absences. I think at Garvin, we had like maybe 2,000-some-odd absences back in the day in 1718. Now we're doubling that. So in general, in our country, in Rhode Island, you know, absences are way up, but there was no correlation between the time and the amount of absences and/or kids being pulled out, just so you have that. There was, I know, I got, so one question about, is this a function or a problem of drivers? The answer is no. We have drivers. It's just a function of how many buses you want to run. Once you get the buses, they will get the drivers. So that's, drivers are not a problem. And what else can I tell you? Yes, it really, you know, it just goes down to, for me, I'm happy, I know you guys don't want to meet on July 3rd to talk about bussing, but I think it'd be good just to have, you know, one more bite of the apple for you all. And however you decide, you decide, but just to have all the facts out there. Last piece I have for you is, I mentioned the company Transpar last time, right? And we talked to Mario Carino, a lot of you know him from the school committee presentations. He's actually coming to our next meeting on July 17th. Ride Next Week is going to put out something. I'm telling you in advance, I heard about it from Tim McGrath. It's something we can buy into. They're on the state contract now. And for 14K, they will look at inter-district efficiencies, like Cumberland doing socket, and inside Cumberland, how efficient are you? So for 14,000, that's what we could get. He'll come next week to, next meeting to talk about it. An add-on could be, you could add on, if you wanted to, boundaries to that and have them do that as well. So if you wanted to, next meeting, we could have, we propose it in front of you for this entity, right? And you could do it. And then you'd ask them, you know, how long would it take to have it done? I wouldn't think you could do it and then operationalize it in September, but you could certainly have the information back probably by Thanksgiving, Christmas, and then make an informed decision for the following year. If you wanted to add on boundaries, you could also do that, and that'd be FY27. Last thing, I don't want to forget. I know also in some emails, some people told me about when construction is done, we said XYZ. Just to be clear, construction's done when BF is done. That's FY27. That's been the conversation all along, so I just want to kind of have that out there. So with that, I will stop talking, but I know Durham is here, Ms. McGrath is here, Ms. Walton is here, Mr. Chandler's here, so we're ready to answer questions.
Questions from the committee? Yes, Mr. Dean?
So if everything's lining up for next meeting, why do we have this special meeting tonight?
That's a good question. I think I mentioned last time, you know, we have Model A or Model B, and we talked about, once you kind of go down the rabbit hole of routing, it's hard to go back. And at some point, there's a point of no return. I'd asked Durham last week, when you're routing, doing this work, what in your mind is the last date you could say, we could stop doing a model and doing another model and still have it open on time? They said that'd be around July 9th. That was their demarcation line. So we tried to poll people for different dates before July 9th.
Mr. Bacon?
So we voted last week, majority passed it, as Durham began working on the route. This is my question for Durham.
I will let Durham answer that.
Because in my opinion, as it was just said, if that were the case, we voted on it, it passed. So that being said, Durham should already be working on the new route. And then more information came, we could make an adjustment as we saw fit.
Yes, we have started working on the routes. The problem that we have is there is still some information that we're waiting for. Kindergarteners, pre-K, all those are things that will impact how we are routing the buses.
On that, Ms. Bacon, Ms. Feather?
Well, to follow up on that, if you're waiting on information, how is it that you were able to give us the estimate for north of $400,000 for this change to be made?
It was based on what we did this past school year, and just changing the bell times.
But what we did this past school year involved bussing students up to here from community. So how could you, in good faith, do that when you know that things are going to be vastly changing this year? Like, how did you come to that number with the fact, basing it on last year, when we were bussing hundreds of kids here last year, that we will not be bussing here anymore?
It's just based on the bell times. It's just the bell times. Because when we look at the bell times, what we have is...
The bus times? So if it's based on the bus times or the start times?
It's the bell times.
Bell times, sorry. My bet, I can't hear. So if it's based on the bell times, again, you're not taking into account that we're bussing probably several hundred less students? Is that true?
Yes, of course. We're not allowed to discuss until then? Motion, second discussion. Motion to reconsider the vote. I have a motion by Ms. Feather. Do I have a second?
I'll second, since we have to have it for discussion.
Second by Ms. Smith. Discussion. Ms. Feather, continue. And then Ms. Smith.
Well, I was waiting for the answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was your, what was your last question? I apologize. Ms. Smith?
So taking on Mrs. Feather's question, especially as it comes to community school, how much additional time did you have to add and build in when you were bringing the community students or any of the other schools up here when you were planning for this past year? Because certainly, it was a further distance to take those students, to bring them here, than say, when Cumberland Hill moved up here. So how much time did you have to balance in with that?
Off the top of my head, I cannot tell you exactly how much time it was added. I have to look at the routing system.
Just my personal opinion on this. Of course, it's my personal opinion, not the school committee's. You had to build an extra time to get these students here when they were in the transitional building. So I'm having a difficult time understanding why a 15-minute window now and a readjustment could be so drastic. And in addition to that, your colleague, who I do not see here tonight, sat here at last week's meeting after our vote and said, "We can't even do Option A, and we would need more buses." And we just raised that. And that was something that I think, I don't know if I misheard it, and I asked over and over again, "Aren't we doing Option A now?" And this was after the vote. So I'm having a difficult time understanding how you put together $400,000 in costs for the district for buses and how they may be from a Thursday evening meeting until 2:15 in the afternoon when we received the email. So I'm hoping you can delve down into that a little bit more for us.
Definitely. So the way we go about it is we are looking at the bell times. And when we're talking about bell times, it's bell time, but we also have to add in the roll time. So the bell rings at 1:45 at a high school. By the time the buses leave the high school, it's not 1:45. It's either 1:55 or 2 o'clock. And when you look at that, and then you take the time that we have to be at the next school, which is the high school, either North or McCord, at 2:15, that's at 2:30, 2:30, that's how much time we are left. So the way you will do it is, okay, if I take a bus from this area in Cumberland, they will go and drop their student, and then they need to go to either the middle school at North or at McCord. Those, that's the time that is added. And what we showed you in that, in that slide that Mr. Chandler had shown the district, is when you adjust those, those times, it's taking away drive time for our buses, which creates a problem because I cannot have a vehicle. We are two places at the same time.
So the time, because the high school time did not change?
Mm-hmm.
With the new times, the time between high school and middle school crunched more together?
Yes.
And that, I'm hearing, is creating the need for additional buses possibly?
Correct.
Okay.
And then for the elementary school, when you take into consideration the dismissal time for the pre-Ks, you have the same problem. Because the earliest elementary school is at 2:45, and the next one will be at 3:00, and the dismissal for the pre-K is 3 o'clock. So those buses that are doing the afternoon pre-K will need to either be replaced by another bus, because we still have to go to this elementary school and speak, especially students that are attending this elementary school, or stay where we were and be able, instead of adding the buses, use the buses that are doing the pre-K and use them to still service the elementary school students.
Ms. Feather, then Mr. Dean?
So if we had just changed the elementary times and not changed the middle school times, you're saying that this would be feasible?
No, I'm not saying that. Still the same time. It's the window of time that you have from the time you leave one school to the time you arrive at the next school.
Yep.
So if I had 30 minutes, and now I'm left with 15 minutes, it's a problem.
So when I, as you can imagine, we've received a lot of emails and calls and everything, I've been doing a lot of work. And, and this is not something that I am skilled in. This is your, you know, your area of expertise, not mine. But I, too, like Ms. Smith, was thinking, okay, well, from, and right on Google Maps, from community school to here, and that's just community school. That's not even like Arnold Mills or the further roads. It's a 14-minute drive without any stops, during the best of times, without any, without any construction or anything like that. So if it's a 14-minute drive from there to here, and we had to bus students from there to here, however, we're going to be bussing students from five minutes to there. How, how is this such a time crunch? And, and actually, I do have to add in one other thing that several parents indicated to me. There, and because I've seen this myself, and I've experienced this myself, you see buses parked at CHOPS, parked back on Sneeche Pond Road, between the two, parked, yeah, parked back there, because they're waiting for that next run. So I'm seeing that there are buses waiting for their next run, and I'm seeing also the evidence of the fact that this school is physically further away than community school. So I'm asking you how it's possible that the times are so crunched? And, and you're looking at me like they just are. And I'm just like, but I need the evidence. I, I need something in front of me for someone to say, "Bus 1 goes from this road to this road to this road to this road to this road, and it arrives here at this time. And then Bus 1 has 40 minutes to get to the next school." Okay, 40 minutes to get to that next school is more than double the amount of time that any bus would need to get to any school in this town. And that's not even driving like me. And so, so I wonder, I want to see the evidence of, in front of me. It's, it's shocking to me that less than 24 hours after our vote, you all can come up with, well, it's going to be north of $400,000. It, it befuddles me. I'm sorry, I'll yield. Mr. Dean?
Along those lines, from what Ms. Feather was just saying, when we tabled the vote in June, we were told that the data we needed to come up with, to come up with these numbers was going to take months. And two days later, we had a number of $180,000. Less than 24 hours later, we had a number of $180,000. Then we do the vote again. Couple of days later, we come up with a number of $400,000. But my question, I talked to, I'm sorry, what was your last name, sir? That's your last name? Montero, Mr. Montero. I spoke with Mr. Montero earlier, and, and he was saying that part of the issue we're having is, is the fact that it takes the kids a long time to get on the bus. Is that a function of the school? Is that something that we could, we could, so when, when the bell rings at a school, how do the kids, how are they ferried out to the buses? And is there any kind of a, somebody there to usher them quicker?
I think schools vary in their protocols. You can always improve on that. I think schools vary depending on just the location, but you can always do better than that, absolutely. If I could have one more thought, just respond to your earlier thing. I know, I think, in a way, Durham's in a no-win situation here, because they're asked to do a model, it takes several weeks. They're trying to give you a number on the front end, as I was. I was thinking it was two buses before, back in the day. It's at least two now, plus a new sped program at community, right? Another mini. So they're trying to give you a rough number, knowing that it's not solid till you route it. And the other side of the coin would be say nothing, and then give you a huge bill, having said nothing in June. So I think you can't win for trying here.
That was the other half of the conversation I had with Mr. Montero, was that they were, they were caught by surprise. They didn't even understand that this was an option. And the fact that the option came after school was over, he said, every other school, when they talk about changing their, their start times, they do it after school starts. So they have the entire year to, to analyze and talk about the, you know, and frankly, if this came with a number, a budget, a budget number, it should have been done before we approved the budget.
That's, that's correct. You normally would do this in the fall or winter, have the final routing in the winter, if you have budget conversations. But I believe we did this on May 22nd, that meeting. 21st, it was not acted on. I think on May 28th, we gave...
It was the first June meeting, and then the second June meeting, we voted. It was tabled at the first June meeting.
Thank you.
I don't know the exact date, though.
June 12th, possibly? Yeah. But to his earlier point, he's correct.
Seemed to retire guys.
You would route this in the, in the fall, winter. So for example, if you went with Transpar, if you go that route, they would start, you'd have the homework done probably by Thanksgiving, Christmas. Then you have the budget number for your budget. You're right.
Ms. Feather?
Wrong carry. Ms. Smith? That's okay. I just have a quick question. Mrs. Walton, when were the schedules, proposed times, sent over to Durham?
I sent the original email to Mark, Lynn, and Kelly on May 28th with possible proposed, this is what we were thinking if we moved to, back to COVID times. And I received an email back from Mark on June 10th, asking, requesting more time in between tiers, that they really need more additional time.
Who's Mark? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Ms. Smith, then Ms. Feather.
Go ahead, Ms. Feather.
Ms. Feather, then Ms. Smith.
I was just going to ask that we can stop, if we could stop referring to the pre-times as the pre-COVID times, because it's pre-construction. It wasn't because of COVID that we changed the times. It was because of the construction. And that's something, frankly, I had forgotten, because everyone says pre-COVID, pre-COVID, pre-COVID. It was actually pre-construction, pre the time that we were bringing students Cumberland Hill here, Ashton here, community here. And we're not bringing BF here. So I just would like us to change that phrasing, please.
Ms. Smith?
I would agree with what Mrs. Feather's saying there. And I understand what you're saying, Dr. Thornton, the thought that we were doing this after construction. I was on that last school committee, and I'd been there for those years, and it was discussed every single year. And every year, we had many, many parents and teachers reaching out to us about getting back to these times. And we kept saying, just like we did with the graduation, just like we did with starting school a little bit later, bear with us, bear with us. One of the school committee members, I can vividly see that person sitting here at the table last year and bringing this up again. And I believe that a lot of us thought that what we were hearing was that we would be going back to those pre-construction times this year, not in 2027. So, you know, we can't go back in time. We can't not fix perception and the different perceptions. And, you know, maybe we should have been more insightful at the time. So we can't not go back and look at that, because certainly everybody had a different view, yet we never went further with questioning it. We just thought this would be the year. Or many of us thought this would be the year. So it's unfortunate. I do have some more questions, though, and I'm not sure who's going to have some of the answers to it. I've gone through every single bus route. How many students are on every bus? How many stops those buses are making? One of the glaring things that I saw, for, and I think we can get efficiencies that could potentially have savings, not saying that it will, because it has to be really looked at. However, we will have buses pick up in the valley section of town to bring them up here to the high school. That bus is then going up into the northern section of town. Then that bus is crossing over and going into the middle of the town. I think it would be very prudent of you to find a way to look at your buses, to fill those routes first, and keeping them, and the drivers in the same consistent neighborhoods, in areas from one to the other to the other. So if that's from the high school, and then that, you know, that driver can take on those similar routes in, when they're taking them to North Cumberland or to McCord, and then they can take on the similar routes or close to it when they get into the elementaries. I understand they were adding layers every time, but we should be looking at that first, and then drilling down from there what's remaining. The other thing I saw was, it looked like there were some buses that maybe are being used at the high school that we're not utilizing after they leave high school. Bus 18 for one of them, is that correct?
Bus 18 does Mercy Mount. So it does the high school, and then does Mercy Mount, and then it fills in at Cumberland Hill if it needs to.
What's the cost that we're paying for that? Because they were supposed to be separated last year in the contract. So what are we paying for, for when that occurs? Are we paying extra for Mercy Mount again?
We have to bus Mercy Mount.
I understand we have to bus them, but we were being paid last year, we were getting charged double. So we were getting charged the $500, say, for the community runs or whatever, but then we were also getting charged separate for the private school. I thought that that was resolved in the contract last year. So I'm just wondering, is that something we should be looking at to find savings?
You are not being charged per school. You are being charged for the bus per day.
So you're not charging is the addition to take that private school bus, or to take, to use that same bus, but take them to a private school. You're not charging any different than the $512 that we're paying for that bus?
Dr. Thornton?
It sounds like hearing from Ms. Smith and Ms. Feather, and Mr. Dean, I think that many of you would maybe be interested in having an external examination of the internal routing. Is that fair to say? Heard that from a couple of you, I think.
We would have to, um, themselves...
Sorry. No, I understand, but I would rather finish the discussion on the bussing before we go into another discussion.
Yeah, we have to, exactly. We got to finish this discussion, and then go into that. Correct. Ms. Smith, then Mr., oh wait, or Mr. Bacon, then Ms. Smith? Okay.
I just have one question. If we have to vote and go back to the original option, are you prepared to do that with exactly what we've been contracted with you all along to do? So that means with the same 25 buses that we're using this year for regular buses and 10 special needs buses, are you looking, or are you saying, no, you want more?
That's the goal, is to stick to what we have right now.
So, one second, Mr. Bacon, I'm so sorry. So I think the assumption would be by the committee, is that what we paid this year would be almost identical, based on the budget we did, based on the fact that the times are as they are with the bussing that we need. And there wouldn't be an additional buses?
The number of buses will stay the same.
And we pay per day for bus?
The rate of the buses will change, because that's what we have in our contract.
Per the, per the contract?
Yes.
Yes, completely. But that was budgeted according to whatever the rate was going to be per the contract. But the number of buses with the times that have been would stay the same, therefore not increasing the daily rate for the number of buses.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Bacon? Mr. Bacon, Dr. Thornton?
Really quick, just one variable. I know they're saying same. We added one new variable. It's the fifth special ed program at community. So that is an unknown. We added a special ed program at community, we have five now, all five bells. That's a new variable, just to be clear.
Thank you. And that's what Mark just reminded me here.
Mr. Bacon?
So as we were told in the last meeting, Ms. Smith, they could not, they will not be able to do that schedule. So to answer that question, they won't be able to do the schedule if we revert back to it, right? We were told that. So, so... to it, right? We were told that. So, so if we're, we added a special education program to Community, where are those students going right now?
Right now, they're at a few locations, Cumberland Hill and a few other spots. Right now, over the past couple of years, we've gained 60 kids in these programs. So to alleviate the pressure of the numbers, we're taking some from Cumberland Hill, some other locations of the same profile of student, and they're going to go to Community.
And we're not going to truck them farther, we're not moving them farther away. They're going to go closer to a closer school, meaning that it will be shorter times that they're spending on the bus.
It really depends on the student and their profile. Sometimes kids go from BF to Community, depends on the program and what their profile is. We don't bus them by location, by distance, for special ed. It's by their profile and where they belong. But now that it's a fifth program in the fifth elementary.
Ms. Smith? Do we have a number of how many special needs students are being bused, or that we anticipate are being bused to each of the schools this year? Because I'm wondering if we have 10 special needs buses out there already, is there a way to say, okay, we know that these 20 students need to get to Cumberland Hill, we assign bus number one to the Cumberland Hill run, and then it goes south to north to get all of them in one swoop in one bus, so that we can not then be crisscrossing all over town with buses and the special needs buses, and then using special needs buses for like Tower Hill, where we could use a 54-person bus, I believe was said last time. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to look at those numbers?
We have 179 students with specialized transportation.
Okay, so that's 17.9 per bus, because we have 10 special needs buses?
But that doesn't include the preschool? And then 30 preschool students.
Okay, so still-
And then they use the mini buses sometimes to get the out-of-district students, like, for instance, a student who lives in Cumberland Hill, and there's no space at Cumberland Hill, and we have to bus them to BF Norton, we'll use a minibus for that.
Are we being charged the minibus rates for that?
Yes, because there's special ed students on the bus. They're not, it's not an additional. It's not an additional. We're filling the bus.
Once that bus is out, it's the day. Got it.
So all 10 buses right now, no matter how we look at it, all 10 are being used for special needs, and then they're filling. You're telling me that all 10 of them are being used for special needs in one way or another, and then we are filling time on those buses with other routes?
The only one that may not is bus seven, which does the Tower Hill. It goes up to Ski Valley, because we can't get a bigger bus up there. Then we don't, we're not allowed to go on Ski Valley property to turn around. So that bus seven is being used. However, I do believe we put some kids in programs on that bus to get them to different areas.
I believe last meeting that someone from Durham stated that you could get a 54-person bus on those routes, that the 71 person would not fit. And that's why we had to use those special needs buses for those regular ones. But I do believe that somebody said, yes, we do have smaller buses that could be used, but without using the special needs buses. And to me, that would be a couple hundred dollars in savings per day. But that's not needed for Tower Hill and regular students. That's needed for special needs students. So if we're using bus number seven-
Hello, in Rhode Island, if you have any student that is under the middle school age, the bus has to have a monitor.
Absolutely. I agree with what you're saying. What I am saying is that based upon what we're seeing, bus number seven is being used on more difficult roads, such as Fisher Road, such as Tower Hill Road. It's being used, and we're paying the 700 and whatever the cost a day versus the 512 for a regular bus. And if that bus is not being used for special needs, and we're not sure in any way, then what we're doing is we're paying a higher cost for regular students to be bused, because there's difficulties with the 71-seat bus. So what I'm saying is, what other options do we have? We have a 400 and some odd dollar charge for four hours use of a van every day. Why, you know, why aren't we looking at other options? I just think that we have, we have a lot to look at, and I'm a little perplexed still on why we would get a $400,000 increase given to us at 2:15 in the afternoon, the night, or the day after the night meeting that occurred, with the cost. And you're saying it's because of the times. And I think what I'm hearing here is a lot of us are saying, there's more to it than just times. And what are we doing with those other efficiencies?
Mr. Bacon, then, then Dr. Thornton?
So while we're on the topic of efficiency, we're talking, we had mentioned a couple of times ago about potentially implementing depot stops under certain, certain categories, right? So we clearly, at the snap of a finger, can just meet whenever, right? Like July 3rd, here we are, talking about this again. And we could meet with policy, create a policy, and why couldn't we get Ski Valley to, I'm sure if we talked to the mayor and the town council, and utilize Diamond Hill, and we can have a bus, a full-size bus, meet at Diamond Hill and gather a big group of students. We're talking, you know, all around this town, we have areas. We can do this. We can meet and do it. And we will, we're going to find the savings by doing things like that. And again, when we do this, we will get students back from BVP and other charter schools, more money back in our budget. We will be able to do this.
Dr. Thornton?
The challenge right now is we're talking about efficiencies and depot stops, all valid, but you're looking to do a bus model with an unknown, a blank check, basically. And that's, that's the challenge for you all, right?
Um, one second. Let Timon go.
All right. Mr. Dean?
So we also talked about the ride waiver for the seniors that drive and the kids that parents bring them to North Cumberland. If you've ever gone down Ewipul in the morning, you can see there several hundred cars that line up every morning there. If we can get a handle, if we can get that waiver and get a handle on how many of those kids, you know, that's a bus or two. And then I lost what I was going to say in the shuffle. That's what happens when you get old.
Sorry. You good? Ms. Feather? Okay. Ms. Wait.
Ms. Smith?
Ms. Feather?
Ms. Goldstein?
Mr. Bacon?
Just, can I answer just to Mr. Dean's? I looked at that over the last week. So it's been some late nights. And 2016, when that came out and it was signed, as Mrs. Feather had said as well, they sent out to the entire district for people to opt into busing, because that's how it's written, to opt into busing. And nobody, nobody didn't sign up. And the reason is, is that people felt, and rightfully so, you cannot take my busing right away from me. And how dare you ask me to sign up for it? It's the law. I want it. That's where I was saying last time, and I'm sorry I didn't make that clear. That's why I was saying, let's ask about opting out instead, because it gives the control to the parents and the families themselves. They, you know, we're not telling, they don't have a bus. We're saying, if you know you're not going to use it, can you let us know? And we can do something about it. And to Mrs. Gonzalez's point, yes, we would have to keep, like, you know, like anybody, when you're building, you have an overage, you have a contingency. We'd have to keep some contingency space on a few of the buses. But what we found was that we looked at the numbers and said, okay, how many students appear to be getting driven at Community, at Ashton, and went through all the estimated numbers about how many those are. And it's not going to give us much savings on the bus, because it's spread out so much. It's not, believe it or not, and that's if they opt out, and then we would have to assess. Unfortunately, we can't do it for this year. And I hate to say something like that, but it is, it's difficult.
Ms., oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gonzalez?
I do have the opportunity to connect with legal counsel at Ride on this particular issue this week. I spoke to him, we exchanged emails this week and spoke to him this morning. And it was a matter of first impression, no district has asked necessarily for a waiver on, or a variance, they typically use the word variance, on whether a district has to comply with a particular, this particular statute provision, which is, I think, 1621-1. He, without being definitive, did, did mention that, of course, the district can apply for a variance on this particular issue. The complication would be, he couldn't, he couldn't wrap his head around what exactly Ride would approve, and whether Ride would approve something like, okay, we're going to implement an opt-out system. And then for those who opt out, if something changes for them in the future, then it's, you know, they're going to have to wait for us to figure it out. That could lead to issues with parents filing appeals directly to Ride on this, which could in turn cost, have some unintentional consequences in terms of cost for, for you all. I share that just as, as a device on that particular issue. Happy to explore it more offline. But that was a little bit of what I heard directly from my legal counsel this week. But happy to talk to whomever on the, on the committee to discuss that further.
Thank you. Ms. Gold, I'm going to do Ms. Goldstein, the news, that'll be. Ms. Goldstein?
Just two points. I actually had looked at opt-in, opt-out, and forms that, how they were, how things were communicated. I saw Coventry had something in 2024, Pawtucket had something for last year, and how they were communicating with families. What I was struck by was the amount of time that we have to be able to communicate this effectively to all families. This is all schools, with the exception of the high school. So all that have a time change in our, in what we voted on. Making sure that all families are communicated to in multiple languages, have a point person to manage this, make sure that everyone knows what's going on, that they understand what opt-out or opt-out in is, waivers. I am concerned about the timeframe to be, and, and taking all of that information and working with Durham to develop bus routes on this. So I have concerns about the timeframe for this. I, I want these times. I want earlier times for the elementary school, but I want them sustainable. I want them durable. And I'm worried about the timeframe that we have to be able to put all of this together. The other point about special ed programming, and Dr. Thornton, if you want to correct me, not all special ed programming in every school is the same. They all service different needs. And so if you have a child who is medically fragile up in Abbott Run, and the program for them is at Garvin, they have to go to Garvin. That is what is appropriate for them. So some things, I think, can be, as we open up a new special education program, some things, some kids can be moved to a closer program if it is educationally appropriate for them. But that is not the case for every single person. You will still have children who, who are in a BF Norton district who require a service at Chill, and they will need to be bused. So it's not a, it's not a neat system. And correct me if I'm wrong.
I agree. Ms. Goldstein, I think time right now is what's burdening us, because we don't have enough time to do a deep dive into this. And we have been told that it could be $400,000 or more. And I think that's what we need to look at. Are we willing to take on that cost when we don't have the time to really figure this out? Today is July 3rd. Tomorrow, to me, is the start of school. And I just want everyone to understand if we keep with the, and I agree, earlier times are better. It'd be more convenient for families completely. However, how much financial and fiscal burden are we willing to take on? And what does that cost us? Not tomorrow, but in one year, two years, and three years? Because this is a reoccurring expense. It's not a one-time thing. And that reoccurring expense, we really need to think about. And if we can't afford it, we really need to consider that. Ms. Feather, Mr. Dean, Ms. Smith? Mr. Bacon, was your hand up first?
No.
Okay.
So I, just a couple of things that I just want to say, and I wrote down a few things. The whole process, this whole process has been exhausting, debilitating, and depressing. And I personally, as has everybody on this board, done hours of work. I've stayed up every night to research. I've put together spreadsheets that no one will ever see, because no matter how much data I can put behind the benefits of changing the times, it won't matter. Because it's clear, we are, to Ms. Goldstein's point, we are out of time. And the long and the short of it for me is that I will be changing my vote. I will be changing my vote to go back to the, the start times that were recommended by Dr. Thornton. And I didn't come easily to this decision, and I'm quite upset and angry about it, to be honest. But the reasons I have are myriad. And they include the less than 24 hours after our vote information that we received from Durham. So as evidenced by our discussion tonight, we need to spend more than $400,000 more. We don't have that money to move the times back to where they were before the construction. And that's at a minimum. To say I feel cornered into making this decision is a mild characterization, all things considered. The timing of the information that we received leads me to question the veracity of the numbers and the effort with which was made to come up with potential efficiencies. My second reason that I'm changing my vote is because of the Department of Education, the federal Department of Education refusing to release funding, as you might have read in the news. And as Dr. Thornton indicated earlier, we have received information that a decent amount of our funding, federal funding, is being reduced. So we're going to have to look at that as well, and that is scary. I have been vocal in my request to do a comprehensive independent study and form a transportation subcommittee, so we can explore moving all the times to better benefit our students. And I mentioned my research before. Some schools flip elementary schools, some with high schools, benefiting both the high schoolers, eliminating that super, super early time, while getting the elementary kiddos who are up anyway into school early. So I am very glad that we're going to have the conversation with Ride at the next meeting. And personally, I am not comfortable with putting our town in this position, in a position where we might have close to $500,000 in, in what we have to make up. I can't do that. So my vote will be changing. Mr. Dean?
I also, as Ms. Feather said, don't really have confidence in the numbers. They just changed too radically. The first time it was 180, then we voted, we voted to change start times. Now it's 400. I understand your position. You know, we're having another bite at the apple. I'm worried that if we, if we maintain the early start times, then we're going to have new information. And in a week from now, we'll be back here with $700,000 in new charges. I mean, when does that end? You know? How many, how many bites at the apple till we get on something we voted for? That was a vote in, in June. The information should have been there in June. And we were told it was going to take months. And it didn't take months, it took hours. And then we voted for the start times. Then it took hours. It just, just doesn't, I have no confidence in the numbers at all. I spoke to the mayor. The mayor, I'm sure, called some people on the board about, committee, rather, about, you know, the implications of, of having to go back and readjust the budget. I told the mayor, my one concern about this is that there is no plan. There's no plan right now. You're saying $400,000, we can't implement it this year. We know in the budget meeting, the mayor said next year is going to be even worse, right? We did not fund the study. One socket funded a study, $130,000. If we had funded the study, we could, we could, you know, make the efficiencies. We could get that number down from $400,000. We didn't fund that study. If we fund the study next year, and the study shows us how to do it, we're, now we're, now we're three years off. You know, there's no plan right now to put these, these schools back to their normal start times. And there are parents out there that have to find people to put their kids on the bus, because they have to get to work for a certain time. And they're the ones that pay for all of this. You know, they're the taxpayers. And I think we need to take that into consideration. I get it. It's, it's, it's at the last minute, but that's the way it was agended. You know, we didn't, we didn't look at this in November. We looked at this in June. So it's not the parents' fault that we looked at this in June. And is it going to take some late nights and some hardships on our part and on Durham's part and on some other people's part? Absolutely. But it's going to alleviate the hardships on several hundred parents in three different schools that have been dealing with this for the entire time we've been doing this school construction. And I understand you guys went through this a lot. It's a lot of heartache and was before I was on the committee. But that's, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
We all knew we were going to do a study. We discussed it. And certainly, you know, we have a whole different committee now. I think that a lot of us thought this study that we're going to do would start in the fall of this coming year. And the reason for that is for the preparation for
And the reason for that is for the preparation for twenty twenty-seven. We did not discuss it on a year-on-year and looking at all the buses and, and, you know, again, we can't go back, it's hindsight, so we can't go back on that. I, I do not feel that Durham is operating in good faith. That is my personal opinion. To come out and give us such a high number, I am very disappointed. I was very disappointed with the comments that were made after we voted last week, when five or six of you were standing at the podium and gave no offering of any information and then said something to us afterwards. And I felt that we were already in a bad situation when comments came out that were so negative about how you just couldn't do either of the, the schedules and how you, you know, weren't going to be able to do this or that and it was going to add a lot. I felt like we walked into it with not good faith when we got that number. We can't change that number. We don't know what that number's going to be. You could go back and take all these great recommendations being made up here for depot stops on Fisher Road. I think that's fabulous, by the way. Don't hate me, parents. You know, little things like that. We, we've given a lot of information here tonight and ideas. I begged us, now I'm a month into this, begging, please, let's have a subcommittee. Please, let's all work together. I don't feel that that's happening. But I cannot sit here as the chair of the fiscal subcommittee with an unknown number. I felt that we could, could find adaptability, even if it came from fund balance, for a bus or a bus and a half when we voted last time. Because I felt that the students' needs outweighed what we would have to do on a fiscal side. And I don't take that very lightly. Anybody who knows me that knows that I look for every penny wherever I can. I didn't make my decision lightly then. I feel that I've been backed into a corner tonight to make a decision because I absolutely cannot support hurting the town of Cumberland. If we added that much money or had to take money from our fund balance in that level, that will impact our ratings. That, we're, we have bonds out there right now. We have rating companies coming and doing reviews. These things will all have impact. And I talked about it throughout our entire budget season. It's a trickle-down effect, right? So now we are being put into a position, and I feel like we're being strangled into a position of just not knowing what these costs are going to be and therefore, we're going to have to impact our students. We're going to have to, unfortunately, I'm going to have to change my vote and go back to the other start times that we've had in place for this past year. Because I cannot do that to our town, I cannot do that to the people of this town, to our, you know, our town council. I can't do it to the mayor, I can't do it to any of them. And I certainly cannot have our bonds and other things impacted or our rating being impacted, which could make a big difference on bond cost because of an unknown and a potential of adding four hundred thousand dollars and taking it out of our fund balance.
Any other? Mr. Bacon?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I don't like the heavy financial burden. I think the number is just a scare tactic, to be honest with you. It's just, we just picked a high number and we threw it. When I say we, I don't mean us up here. The issue I have is the goalpost just keeps getting moved. You know, this year, it's, this is what it is. And then next year, we already know what the problem's gonna be. We're not gonna have as much money next year, so then there's gonna be another problem there. It's just gonna keep getting moved more and more down the line, it's never gonna happen. I am, just like all those emails that we got from all of those parents, I fall into that category. I have made personal family decisions, passed up on promotions at work because of whatever. And I, this isn't about me, this is about all the hundreds of those students. And this has turned into, it's just about money, it's not about what's best for the students. So I will not be changing my vote, but whatever.
Dr. Thornton?
As I mentioned, next meeting, Ride will be here. If you did sign on for the study, I believe you would have a definitive outside decision on where we are for next budget cycle.
And when they come, we can put that on the agenda in order to vote on doing, I think it's what Mr. Dean was speaking of.
I was speaking of the, the comprehensive study that One Socket did.
I think, I think that's the same.
Same company, Transpar, did them. Now, Ride now is announcing next week, they have them under contract. And we can, for the baseline price, fourteen K, we get two pieces. I'm proposing maybe you consider adding in boundaries too for an extra cost. But he'll be here next meeting.
And we'll discuss, I think, what you were speaking of. And that will be for the next academic year.
Ride, if Transpar did this, I imagine they're done late fall. You'd have it for budget time. And that would be what you would vote on for the budget for twenty...
That's a, that's a plan.
Five, six? Six, seven? Six, seven?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Feather. A second? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Chair to interrupt?
No, of course.
Just, I was thinking about what the motion actually was. What I heard, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the motion was to reconsider the vote. With that, I think there needs to be two votes. One, a motion to reconsider the vote. And I have it, I, I'm happy to share my computer, I've sort of written out the, the motions. And then a second one to actually take an action on that vote. Yep. So I will go over in a sec.
So we have a motion to reconsider the committee's vote from June twenty-sixth, the change of start times for Cumberland's elementary and middle schools. That motion was made by Ms. Feather and seconded by Ms. Smith. I'm gonna do a roll call vote, and I'm gonna start with Mr. Dean.
To reconsider.
To reconsider, yes.
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 Mr. Bacon?
No.
Chair votes yes. That passes five to one with Mr. Bacon and the negative. Motion to reverse the committee's vote on June twenty-sixth to change start times for Cumberland's elementary and middle schools. Make that motion. Motion by Ms. Feather. Second by Ms. Goldstein. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Yes, I'm so sorry.
Already, is that Model A you're talking about?
It'd be Model A of the school times that have been for this year that we were just in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's correct, right? All right. Motion by Ms. Feather, second by Ms. Goldstein. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Mr. Dean?
No.
Ms. Feather? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Goldstein? Mr. Bacon? The chair votes yes. That passes four to two with Mr. Dean and Mr. Bacon and the negative. Next item on the agenda is appointment of Transportation and School Boundary Subcommittee. For this subcommittee, we would like it during the daytime, just so we can make sure all partners are around the table that need to be there. So just to give everyone a heads up on that, depending on your schedules. Ms. Gonzalez, did you have something to speak to regarding it?
I did wanna share this with the committee that just, the, the assumption is that this subcommittee is likely going to review and go through information that may include or likely includes identifying information for students. As such, there is some homework to be done on the policy committee to amend our FERPA policy, to ensure that we can give parents notice of directory-level information. Currently, that is not included in the FERPA policy, and so I'm a little reluctant to, for, for the new committee to start to look at that data without following FERPA guidelines.
With that information, we will table this to have the policy subcommittee look at that so we can then appoint a committee, hopefully on July seventeenth. Does that, right, is that the next date? Yes, Mr. Bacon?
So the way that this just went, I just wanna make sure that things get done that said that they are done. So that being said, I motion that there is a comprehensive study done and that there is also a depot bus study done.
I don't know if we can motion if it's not on the agenda for OMA?
I think it is connected to...
Okay, perfect.
The conversation that we're having around these changes. I'll, I will defer to the committee on what that motion actually looks like. It sounds like there is already a study on the table on transport, that, that the committee will be considering on...
We have to, on the seventeenth, when Ride comes. My understanding is they're going to talk about this plan. Correct?
That's correct. When Ride comes, you can certainly pose all those questions or bake all those items into what they're gonna be doing if you choose to go with them.
Excellent. And at that time, we have to look at the FERPA policy for the bus school boundaries subcommittee, so we can appoint that. As well as, you wanna relook at the policy for depot stops? Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. Bacon?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a motion on the table. If, if there's a second, I don't, I'm not sure.
I, I can withdraw the motion, but I will, I'm barring next week's meeting.
Okay, so you want, so Mr. Bacon withdraws the motion? I'm sorry, Ms. Feather? I, I'd like to just make sure that everyone on the committee knows that I think we all feel really strongly about this and, and that it will get done. I, I don't think that, we don't think that it won't, it will. Ms. Smith?
Depot stops are allowed in the policy already. So we are, we are golden for that to be looked at, and, and that's what we would expect of partners.
Excellent. All right. With that, I motion to adjourn.
Oh, that's a second. Oh, I motion, I motion to adjourn.
Ms. Feather motion, second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. We adjourn at five oh one.